Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here tonight, everyone here and everyone at home. We will call to order our Board of Commissioners regular meeting April 4th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Ms. Jones?
Ms. McDonald? Commissioner Hall?
Present.
Ms. Johnson? Vice Mayor Butler?
Present.
Mayor Anderson?
Present. Item number three is prayer and pledge. Vice Mayor Butler?
Lord, we're meeting today to cook matters of business, get our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, mayor's comments. Thank you, Officer Meadows, for being here to keep us safe tonight, and Sergeant Hill for manning our metal detector. If everyone would just make sure to have their mics where everybody can hear you so that the people at home, that are our community at home that's listening, can hear what we're saying. And let's just have a good meeting, and thanks, everybody, for being here. Item number five, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
Jones?
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item number five passes 4-0. Item number six, citizens' comments.
None tonight, mayor.
Thank you. Item number seven, public announcements, awards and recognition.
Good evening. The next event that we have coming up is the Arts and Crafts Fair on May the 11th at Bowie Park. And we're still accepting vendors for that event. If anyone would like to be a vendor, please contact us at 615-799-2484, or you can email me at rross@fairview-tn.org. And then we also have summer camps that are coming up at Bowie Nature Park, starting up on June the 10th. And we'll get that listed for the next meeting. But if anyone's interested in signing their child up for the camps for the summer, you can email bree@bbayley@fairview-tn.org. Again, that's bbailey@fairview-tn.org. And one thing that I would like to touch on for tonight is we're in the spring season, which is storms are coming up. We had storms that came through earlier this week. And I'd like to remind everyone that we do have a free message alerting system that they can subscribe to by simply texting FVAlerts to 88877, and you'll receive weather alerts, road closures, if there's a major accident in town, city updates, even information on events. Again, that's FVAlerts to 88877. That's all I have tonight, mayor.
Thank you. Item number eight, staff comments and monthly reports. A, city manager, Mr. Darty?
Thank you, mayor, board. Just have three items tonight. I guess everybody sees that the doors are closed and we have heat and air. And we're very, very thankful we did not have to request amended budget or anything. And we came in well under budget and everything's fine, so I didn't mean to cry wolf. But we appreciate your willingness to let me cry wolf. Secondly, we're in the budget season. We've started our budget meetings with department heads this week, and we'll go and we'll be working on that. If anything on your Board of Commissioners' budget that you would like to see adjusted, just let me know sometime in April. We're hoping to have the, well, we're not hoping, we're going to have the first read of the budget on May 16th. We'll hopefully have a workshop or two before that. I will definitely be emailing your information and give you plenty of time. And then we'd like to have the final, the second read and final read on June 6th and get that turned in the comm. controller on time. I'm sure they will appreciate it, too. On the zoning, we also did zoning evaluations this week. We had nine, for the zoning ordinance. We had nine RFQ submittals. We will narrow them down to four by Friday. We'll have interviews the 18th and 19th, and then hopefully we'll have one to bring to you guys. Excited about that. But that's all I have tonight. I will entertain any questions, if anybody has anything they'd like to ask.
Any questions from the board? Okay. Item number nine, consent agenda. A, minutes from March 21st, 2024, Board of Commissioner work session. And B, minutes from March 21st, 2024, Board of Commissioner regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Ms. Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item number nine passes 4-0. Item 10, old business. We have no old business tonight. Item 11, new business. 11A, first reading, ordinance 2024-03, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 14.76 acres of property located on Fairview Boulevard, consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 023, parcel 053.00 from Commercial General, CG Commercial General, to IR Industrial Restrictive. Are you going to be talking about that? Okay.
Thank you, mayor. This item is a rezoning request. As you just stated, the property is currently zoned Commercial General, and the request is to move to, or be rezoned to Industrial Restrictive. The genesis for this request is the relocation of a company, Laystar, and in need of, it's a small-scale manufacturing of small electronic parts. Again, they're moving here, bringing jobs to Fairview. The site was currently, or previously approved for a commercial business. Again, this is keeping in line with previous approvals on the site. And this does come to you all from the Planning Commission with a positive recommendation for approval without any conditions at all.
Move for approval.
Second. Okay, little background. I have spoken with the owner several times, and this is such a great opportunity for Fairview. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously for approval for this, or recommendation for approval. And then we had Annalisa Roberts from Williamson Inc. come out and speak about what a great opportunity this business is for Fairview. The business name is Laystar, and it will provide 25 to 35 jobs initially with it being a sanitary lab where they do research in small manufacturing. There will be no large deliveries to and from, just small packages. And they will also give an opportunity for our mechatronics students, which we have at Fairview High School, to have jobs if they choose right out of school, or either if they choose to go to college, return for a possible career there. Also, one of the biggest assets I see, in my opinion, a lot of our mechatronics students, what they have to have is 200 hours of internship in that field, in the mechatronics field. And most of them have to go to Nissan Smyrna or out, a little bit in Franklin, but mostly Nissan Smyrna and General Motors out in Spring Hill. So this is a great opportunity. When I spoke with the owner, one of my, you know, one of my biggest questions is, would you be able to work it so that our students here can do their intern hours here? And he said, absolutely. That is huge, where our students can stay right in the City of Fairview, they can do their internship here, and possibly, if they would like, have a job here at this company. So I just, I'm really excited about it.
Mayor, could I say a little word about the mechatronics? I actually toured France several years ago with Dr. Oriya and some students at France, where they have a production line. And this was the beginning stages of the mechatronics classes at Fairview. And look what it's led to. We're now getting the benefits of our students, and they can actually get their degree at Columbia State within two years. Am I right on that, mayor?
My son actually did that. He actually got his associate's degree in the mechatronics engineering before he got his high school diploma. So it's just a great opportunity.
So I saw the presentation. I was here in the Planning Commission meeting, sitting in the back there, and I was so pleased to see this coming to our town. Anyway, that's the reason that I wanted to be the one to make the motion. Thank you.
Good, okay. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Item 11A passes 4-0. Item 11B, first reading, ordinance 2024-04, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 20.2 acres of property located at 7431 Crowcut Road, consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 046, parcel 016.01 from AR15A Agricultural Residential to R20, one and two-family residential.
Thank you, mayor. This 20-acre rezoning request is being made in order to extend the existing subdivision to the west or southwest, which is Aiden Woods. This 20-acre parcel, if rezoned, has been planned out to be additional 17 lots. If you look at the map in front of you, the parcels or the lots that are proposed are on the southern and eastern boundary of the rectangular lot you see there in blue. Along the northern boundary, they are not proposing anything due to topography and other environmental features, thereby creating a larger buffer between the larger lots there in the county for the parcels just north of this that are located in the county. Again, this is purposeful to extend Aiden Woods, which is to the southwest. So it'll be the next phase of that, and it will connect out to, pardon me, Crowcut Road. This does come to you all with a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission at their last meeting in March. And I'll be glad to answer any other questions that you all may have.
Do we have anyone here to represent that project?
Good evening. I'm Allison Corolla with T-Square Engineering. As he said, you know, we're just intending to extend the existing Aiden Woods. Really, the intention of that is all of our access is going to be from the existing subdivision. And so because of that, we feel that, you know, this rezoning is going to be in kind with the adjacent lots from that existing subdivision, and feel that this rezoning is appropriate for the area.
Do you have a motion?
I have a question, but I'll wait till after motions, ma'am.
Yeah, let's just, if I could get a motion, that'd be great.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Hall?
Yes, it was come up in the Planning Commission, which I was not a member, but in the audience the same night. At what stage would the traffic study be done?
No, there was actually already a traffic study completed with Phase 3 of Aiden Woods subdivision. We are currently working on revising that traffic study to update with the overall lot count, including these additional 17 lots.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. And that'll, of course, be submitted with the master development plan that follows this.
If I could add to that, staff actually did receive emails today regarding that, in terms of beginning that process, so I'd verify that. We've had communication, they've had communication with staff already regarding the traffic study.
Wayne took my question. That was something I brought up at the Planning Commission, and I just wanted to touch on it, but Wayne beat me to it, so that's all I had.
Okay. I have a major concern from the community.
Yes, ma'am.
It has nothing to do with this getting approved or not. It has to do with dump trucks. We are seeing, I've got video and pictures of dump trucks going, and I don't know who would be responsible for handling this, but they're traveling through from... Are the same people over Aiden Woods Phase 3 as Phase 2?
I believe it's on the, at this point, the builders have bought it and purchased it, so it's not the same applicant as our developer.
Okay, so I'm not sure if this... Josh, can you help me? I'm not sure if, I'm either going to speak about this in roundtable, or is it appropriate to speak about it now?
I think it would probably be better reserved for the roundtable discussion, mayor.
Okay, then I'll wait. It has nothing to do with the approval. It just has to do with public safety. So I'll wait till roundtable.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, Ms. Jones?
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Upstain.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Item 11C passes with three approvals and one abstention. Item 11C, first reading, ordinance 2024-05, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning .865 acres of property located at 7312 Lake Road, consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 042, parcel 001.01 from RM40, Single Family Residential, to RS15, Single Family Residential.
Thank you, mayor. Again, this rezoning request for .865 acres at 7312 Lake Road, again, this is a request to rezon to RS15, which is a single-family residential district, similar to the last rezoning, in terms of the genesis for this is Richville Estates Phase 1 is located to the west, and this parcel is being requested to be rezoned in hopes that it would be subdivided later on into two lots to continue to add on to Richville Estates Phase 1 and to provide this, or to have these lots have frontage on to the existing road that provides access into Richville Estates Phase 1. These lots will be matching the lot, the average lot size and setbacks of the existing development, thereby matching the existing development. And this does come to you all with a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission as well.
Is anyone here to represent?
Paulson with Anderson Delcamps. Yeah, it's just going to be two lots, similar to our 20 pud behind it. Be similar houses. We have house plans if you'd like to look at them. Good-looking houses.
I saw the houses today. They look good. Thank you. Move to approve.
You're making a motion to approve, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I apologize. In the planning commission, you guys said the access points, are they both coming from that new road, or one on Lake and one on?
The northern lot will act to have a drive off the front road, and then the one on the south will have actually side garage with the side drive.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Ms. Hall?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11C passes 4-0. Thank you. Item 11D, first reading, ordinance 2024-06, an ordinance to amend the Fairview zoning ordinance, Article 6, Residential District Regulations, Section 6-104, purposes and intent of AR Agricultural Residential Districts in order to add the animal care and veterinary services to 6-104, one, two uses permitted and with supplemental provisions, SUP. City Planner.
Thank you, mayor. This request is coming to you all this evening. It does come with a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission. The beginning of this request was that someone had spoken to Ethan Greer, the city planner on staff, and had made note that these two uses, the two veterinary uses provided in the zoning ordinance were not permitted within the same zoning district. Ethan, myself, and other staff at Griggs-Malone, we did some research, and we looked at potential, would this be a good idea? Should this be in the same zone district, or at least provide that option? And in doing that research, we felt like it was a good idea. And the idea was to bring the, or make the request to have the animal care and veterinary services, which is usually for smaller animals, more pets, to add that into the agricultural district, where the veterinary services for livestock is currently provided as a conditional use. This just provides, this would just provide the opportunity, if someone so choose, to possibly have both of these services in one location in an agricultural district, which currently is not provided for in the zoning ordinance for Fairview.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any questions from the board?
Yes, mayor, I do. Thank you. Do we have any acreage permitted with this? Is it an acre, or is it five acres, or?
The agricultural district, I believe, is a minimum of one acre. So it would be a minimum of, I believe, one acre you would have to have to potentially have both of these uses on one lot.
Okay.
In terms of agricultural zoning, Ethan, in the research, I believe there's only four parcels that are zoned that currently. And I believe maybe only two, possibly three of those would even have adequate size to be able to provide all the necessary parking that would come along with any type of use like this.
You mentioned the key word that I'm concerned about is the parking. Like if the, you know, farmer brings in some, say, a couple of horses that need to be checked out, do they have ample room for a horse trailer to access the property and this type thing? And the reason I'm asking that, large animals sometimes have to be quarantined. And like, I know on my property, I had some horses delivered from Louisville, where when they come from overseas, like came from Europe, to ponies, I forget, they were special-type ponies that was being transported all the way to Texas. But they was like a week boarding at my place in the transportation, possibly. But they had to be quarantined at Louisville before they could ever come to me. And of course, animals that's transported state to state have to have health certificates and this type thing. So that's the reason I'm asking, do they have ample room in case something like that comes up for the veterinary clinic that has to, you know, do in a quarantine.
So in terms of the large animal, so currently, the large, the, let me get there, veterinary services for livestock, which is large animal, that is a conditional use, meaning if someone wants to request that use, that is not a use permitted by right. They would have to come request that from the board zoning appeals after that time. And there are certain requirements for that. And at that time, they would have to submit their site plan and go through the normal process for Planning Commission as well. So everything that you've just spoken about, that would be something that currently has to be looked at and verified and made sure that it has provided all of that adequate space for boarding or for any type of, any kind of activity that's necessary for the large animal, including the parking for trucks and trailers as well. And so that's current standards, that's current requirements for that in agriculture. So yes, those requirements are there, and they would be enforced for this.
Basically, a case-by-case basis then, as far as what their intent is for business?
That's correct, and that would be as is today. Anything right now for veterinary services for large animals would have to be in agricultural zoning, and they would have to go in front of the board zoning appeals to request that use.
Okay.
And so if they were not able to meet those standards, then it cannot proceed forward.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Item 11D passes 4-0. Item number 12, roundtable, mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Hall?
Mayor, I've got a pretty good list here tonight, so spare with me. First thing, I've been asked to announce about the Arbor Day and Yearth Day celebration from the Bowie Park friends and also the Tree and Landscape Board. April 27th, 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon at Bowie Nature Park. There will be free giveaways from Tree City USA and the Fairview Parks and Landscaping Board will be over there. The Tennessee Department of Agriculture/Forestry Division will be there. There will be crafts and activities for children, tree scavenger hunt, crafts, et cetera. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows about this, on April 27th, from 9:00 AM till 12:00 noon. The next thing, I want to thank all the employees, and especially, I've got two divisions here tonight that I want to name the employees and the departments. One of that is the Planning Department, which Ethan Greer is over that. Maria Bruce is, she's just a wonder out there. She really does a lot of help for everybody. And Tom Ponder, I think he's over the, basically over checking on all the inspections and this type thing. And that's the Planning Department. And the Public Works Department, Todd Bratcher is over that. Blake Ayers is his, been with him for a number of years. William Atkins is, actually, I think I've heard that he's training two new people that we have, the name of Skylar Polston and Dillinger Miller. So I'm glad to see that we have some extra help for these boys that's worked so hard through the years. Tonight, we have Ms. Linda Williams here in the audience. She is the one that came before us a few weeks ago about the family and community educational scholarship of $1,500. They have four applicants so far, and this scholarship will be awarded in approximately two weeks. So I just wanted to make sure, and thank you, Ms. Williams, for bringing that to our attention. I'm sorry we didn't make announcement more about it when you first announced it. And I'm also glad to see that the summer camps are coming back. And here again, I want to thank all the board members tonight. And here again, I want to thank all the board members tonight. I think it's been a real nice meeting. Thank you. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner McDonald.
Uh, nothing to Mayor Knight. I'm sorry. Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, um, an update for you guys. I did work on the Parks and Landscape Ordinance. Uh, Mr. Hogan has it now. He's going to probably redline it. It'll probably all be red. And so when, once he gives it a green light, we'll see it in front of us. It's just an update on that. Another thing, I, I've reached out to the local representatives of T-Dot, and just for, so you guys know for scheduling, trying to get them to come to do a workshop with us, a six o'clock workshop or so, um, before one of our meetings to give us an update on our current projects, our future projects, and how we can be uh, better stewards going forward to try and be invested in them. And, and getting in touch with them hadn't been easy, but I, we're, right now we're working on coordinating a date to try and get them all here. And then, uh, you probably have this in your reporters can ask about if we had any dispatch, uh, updates from our long discussion of dispatch fees last month. That is all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, thank you for putting that together with T-Dot. I think that will, um, I, I get asked about that every day, road widening and the light at Cumberland one hundred. So if we could get them to come out and, you know, give us some good feedback on that, that'd be great. I, I met a, I met a lot of meetings, uh, during the week, so I was able to, um, actually be in a meeting where, um, County Mayor Rogers Anderson was at and spoke to him about sitting down with him and talking about the, um, nine one one, the dispatch fees and it was, it was kind of funny. He said that, like, it can't be two, um, commissioners and then it can't be two county commissioners. And so I was like, okay. So I felt, I told him that what I would do is schedule with his, um, executives, executive assistant and scheduled to sit down with him one-on-one. So we've got that in the works right now. And as soon as we get finished with that, then I'll bring something back to the board and we can kind of discuss it further and see, hopefully we have a plan. I was kind of hoping that there would be more than just, I mean, I have, um, Chief Humphries and I have discussed this quite a bit, so I'm familiar with what's going on and, and I guess the, the whole route that we've gone, you know, from when it was eighteen thousand till what they're asking for now. So I feel like I can discuss it well with him and, um, you know, try to get some help there. So I will discuss it with the board as soon as, um, we can put that meeting together. I want to congratulate, um, Officer Taylor Heath, uh, on the birth of his baby boy, uh, this morning. That's exciting news. Uh, he, uh, they're new parents, so, uh, they've got, um, you know, a lifetime of, uh, joy and, you know, fun stuff to look forward to. So congratulations, congratulations to him. And, um, you know, just excited about that. We want to see pictures. I know, uh, Officer Meadows had one, but, you know, got to get some more. And then just letting, reminding everybody that this Saturday is, uh, the sixtieth, uh, anniversary celebration for the library. And I can't remember the time. Do you, Richard, do you?
I believe it's nine AM.
I, I, I do as well. No, eleven, eleven to four. Okay, yeah. That's fine. So I just wanted to get, I wanted to get it out there correctly as far as, you know, letting people know, okay. Eleven to four at the library. And it's their sixtieth anniversary celebration. I hope everybody can attend. And Richard, you had something that was at nine on Saturday, right?
Yes, ma'am. Let me pull it up real quick. Um, there, there's a community fundraiser for Kevin Fincham. Kevin passed away a couple of weeks ago. Um, he's beloved member of, of the community and did a lot of things with sports organizations and with the high school and schools. Um, there's going to be a fundraiser at Fairview Nutrition this Saturday from nine AM to four PM.
Okay. Okay. And I, I wanted to throw out a reminder that, um, we do not allow signs on our telephone poles. I, um, was out enjoying the weather at the beginning of the week. It's kind of cold now again, but the beginning of the week it was nice and I pulled down several signs. The ones that I could reach, there are some that are taller than me and, um, I reached out to Todd and he's going to get those. I gave him the address. Uh, but, you know, no signs on our telephone poles. And while I was doing that, I happened to, because two of the signs were on the pole that's right next to, uh, Dunkin' Donuts. I pulled into Dunkin' Donuts and I was kind of over by the pole and witnessed a car that had some people in it. They had gotten food that evidently, and drinks that they were eating and drinking in their car. And when they finished doing that, they dumped every bit of it onto the parking lot. So I pulled right behind them, took pictures and got their license plate. And I guess, uh, does anyone know what you do with that? Is there any type of, you know, littering, something or whatever? They were not from our community. I just want to say that. The license was from a different city, so there, it was no one from our community, but I, you know, I ask about, I mean, I, I say this every, you know, every meeting about, you know, keeping our, our community beautiful and I just didn't know if there was anything that we have for the city of Fairview against, uh, littering as far as fines or anything like that.
Off the top of my head, I'm not certain whether or not there's an ordinance, but I'll be happy to look into that and report back.
I mean, because, you know, I've got, I've got the picture of the litter, the car, the license plate, everything, because I just, I can't believe that. I just remember when I was growing up watching, you know, the Native American fellow with the tear going down his eye, Tennessee trash, and I just, you know, I don't know. I, people are driving and maybe pitch something out and that's bad enough, but to see a whole, I mean, it was the cup holder with all the cups and all the bag and all the wrappers and just thrown out the window. And I've got to say, uh, I don't know who it was with Dunkin' Donuts, but I circled around, uh, because I was getting, you know, doing some other things and I came back around and I saw them cleaning, cleaning it up. So, you know, I appreciate them doing that. It is their parking lot, but, you know, that was nice that they got that up pretty fast. But anyway, if we found out, you know, if there's something out there, that would be great. So, um, I was, uh, excited to be able to be, um, invited to the, oh, grand opening of the BNA Hilton last night. It's the new Hilton Hotel, which is phenomenal, at the airport. Uh, being in the architectural field for twenty years, um, I worked on the design of the Skirmerhorn Symphony Center. And at that time, it was the most acoustically sound building in the world. Which is really, just everything that goes into that to make sure that the music is not interrupted by any sound, whether it be HVAC, plumbing, whatever. But it is incredible to go to the sky deck of this hotel and see the planes come in to our airport and see the planes go out and you don't hear a thing. And you're right there at the glass. You don't hear, you, there's no vibration, there's no sound. I mean, and so when they were speaking about it last night, they just said that, you know, people are stressed out enough when they're having to, you know, maybe fly for work or, you know, make connections or whatever. And that's all, you know, that's the last thing they want to hear is, you know, planes coming in and out over. And a lot of hotels you find at airports do that, but I've got to say, ours doesn't. And it's a, it's a beautiful, uh, facility and they're more than happy to give tours if anybody wants to go see it, but it was, uh, really neat. We had, um, Governor Lee and, um, Mayor Freddie O'Connell of Nashville. A lot of the other mayors, we were all invited from middle Tennessee. And it was, it, it was a really great event. So I enjoyed being able to be a part of that, but if you ever get an opportunity, go check it out because it's pretty cool. Let's see.
Mayor, to answer your question, there is an existing ordinance for litter seventeen one oh six. Um, I'll get with you afterward.
So, um, Jamie, can you come to the mic? So how would, so in my situation or any other citizen's situation, it really, it really disturbed me. I mean, it's bad enough if somebody throws one thing out, but a whole load of trash right into a, you know, parking lot, what, like, what can be done?
Call the non-emergency number. We can get an officer out there. If they can get a tag number or something of that nature, that, that'd be helpful, but definitely call the non-emergency number if you see somebody littering, because it's on public or private property.
So once they saw me taking pictures of them, they're gone. So how does that work?
Well, I mean, if you got the tag number, we can certainly reach out, even if, even if they're outside of another jurisdiction, we can certainly reach out to that agency and see if they can't make contact with individuals and we can handle it from there.
Yeah, and they, they did not live in, uh, they did not live in Williamson County, so.
We can still reach out to that jurisdiction, see if they can't make contact with the offender and we can handle it.
Okay, so we can, we can turn it into you. And do, do we know what the ordinance says or?
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's along the lines, I'm sure, of the state criminal ordinance for littering. The difference is the a municipal fine is civil in nature. Um, a criminal proceeding can, can incur fines as well. But criminal in nature, so just a different path that they can go. But it's.
But reporting it and then letting it go from there?
Yes, ma'am. That, just like the chief, chief explained, that's, that's the appropriate mechanism.
Okay, cool. You're the chief now.
I got, I got a promotion, I guess.
I was gonna, I was gonna, I was gonna let that slide until I heard the, the snickering.
Somebody let Humphries know.
Okay. Okay, so the last thing, it, it's probably, you know, for, for, uh, our, um, engineering staff and, and Josh here. So I have, I have been, um, re, looking into this and also been called about this so many times. So what it is, we have the first phase of Castleberry. And then we have Aiden Woods, which connects to Castleberry. Aiden Woods Phase Two, and then we have Aiden Woods Phase Three. So what's happening is Aiden Woods, um, Phase Three has a construction entrance, which it actually has an entrance and exit and a bypass if the entrance and exit happen, happen to be blocked. The reason I know that is because I've driven it with my SUV. And there's no problem. The dump trucks, um, several months ago, our, uh, several of the citizens from Castleberry reached out to me and their, um, Al Hayman, who is, over their HOA, um, called me and asked if I could come out there and take a look. So I told them absolutely. If anybody calls me, I'm sure with the other commissioners, we'll, you know, be happy to check into things that are going on. So I went out there and just happened to get out there at the right time. Uh, uh, right, right where the connection between Aiden Woods and Castleberry is, there was a line of nine dump trucks that were going to come right through, um, the subdivision. Which that subdivision was built when there weren't requirements for sidewalks or traffic li, um, or streetlights or anything like that. So the, that community, the people walk with their families and their animals or whatever on the street. That's the only place they've got to walk. And these dump trucks flying down through there, um, you know, and our, our police, I mean, they do a great job, but, you know, they can't be there twenty-four seven. So when those dump, dump trucks fly down through there, it's just a public safety issue and I get called all the time. So anyway, I was out there. When I, I pulled up and I just kind of put my hand out, you know, like, just to have the, the first guy in the convoy stop so that I could just ask them why they were not using the construction entrance. Well, when I did that, luckily Al was with me. I had him with me because he was showing me what was going on. Every one of the drivers from the dump trucks got out and surrounded my car. It was a intimidation and were not very nice to me at all. I was nice to them the whole time and I have a witness to that. But, um, basically told me that, um, they don't have to listen to me, that I have no power over them and that, um, you know, anyway, whatever. But I, um, asked them, I said, could you please just respect the, you know, this neighborhood and use your construction entrance? And they said, well, it's shorter for us to take this route than the construction entrance. So I talked to Ethan and he spoke with, and I, Brad or somebody that's over, was over Phase Two at the time, and he's the, you know, the superintendent or whatever. And so they told them, you know, please use the construction entrance because they'd given me the excuse that it was blocked. Well, like I said, I drove my SUV, which is not a dump truck, right through that construction entrance and it was fine. So they, the superintendent told them that they, um, had to use that construction entrance from now on. And so for a while, I think they started doing that, but then it got back to now where they're using, um, Castleberry. So what I was told is that, um, Phase Three has started and they, they have the construction entrance in and out, but Phase Two in our, um, I guess their plans state that they can use, and this was before this board, um, they can use, um, Castleberry. So what I'm asking is that we put something on the agenda or however we need to do it where um, the board votes on Phase Two to use Phase Three's construction entrance instead of going through, um, the Castleberry neighborhood. And I guess I'd want input maybe from the board if they, if y'all feel like that's appropriate for us to ask that um, it be revised, that they use the construction entrance instead of the neighborhood.
I apologize for not knowing where the construction entrance is. I'd come from Cro-Cut today all the way through.
That's where it is. And you can go, you can go all the way through Castleberry, through Aiden Woods Two, Three, and then it goes right to the construction entrance. And when I went over it, um, I mean, it, my vehicle, it, I'm in an SUV, it was fine. And I, I didn't have a problem. It was, you know, kind of.
In my little car, I went all the way, come out, come out through Castleberry without any problem. And they do have, you know, they do have their, um, first phase of their road already completed there, but I didn't know it was construction entrance. I know it was at one time.
Also, I do want to point out this, Castleberry is one of, on our list to be paved. So I feel like, I feel like this needs to be decided before we pave and then we've got dump trucks going across our new paved streets.
Uh, if I can interject just a couple of things, um, I had talked with Ethan about this and, um, the, um, the, when they got the authorization to go use that as an entrance, they didn't have another option earlier. Now that they have this option, I think it's, uh, unless, uh, Mr. Hogan or, um, uh, they have any legal things, I think it would be appropriate for the board to, to do a resolution to close the Phase Two entrance and then use, everybody use the Phase Three entrance. I, I think that's, that'd be fine and legitimate in my eyes. Do you, do you disagree?
I just don't have enough information to, to give a qualified opinion at this point. I think I would need to look at the development plan that was approved and see, see what they were approved to do and then probably talk to Mr. Carter about i- if they're, if they are in fact approved to use that entrance or not use that entrance, uh, the best way to enforce that or the best way to amend that. So, um, I, I will take that as a look up. We'll get with city planning staff, see, see what's on the approved development plan that they're op, that they should be operating under and then uh, come up with some recommendations on the way forward.
And I can, I can see at one point, fate, well, they, anyway. They need, uh, they need it to be safe no matter what around the neighborhood, but I can see where if Phase Two, the only way in and out was the. Two, the only way in and out was the neighborhood, but it's not anymore. So I really feel like it does not matter one bit to me if it takes them an extra five minutes. They need to use a construction entrance where they're not putting the safety of, you know, children and families at risk.
Vice Mayor, you have a second?
Do, do we have any weight limits on secondary roads or anything? Do we have anything in that, in our ordinances about that?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, it, it shows right on the, on the plane, their construction entrance coming right down.
Coming through there.
Yeah.
That's it. And, you know, it's public, city right of way, it's public road, so it's hard, I guess, to tell, people can't use it. But I, I agree if, you know, if we can try and push and, and put it, discuss putting a no, no construction traffic, then implement a fine or something if that's possible. And then, but the only thing is, I think they're probably coming from the quarry off Spencer Mill down, cross bike down that way. So now they're probably going to go down Old Franklin to Beshear's. You know, they're going to, it's going to create an issue in another spot probably, but...
I think that's a great idea. If, if we can't, for whatever reason, enforce them to use the construction entrance, if it's possible to do weight limits on, you know, on the neighborhood of, the original neighborhood of Castleberry, then, you know, that, that would be an option. If, if that's an option, I would, I would see that that would be a good plan. So that way, the weight limit obviously would prevent them from even being able to, being able to use the neighborhood.
We'll take a broad view of any and all available remedies, including any, any future phases that they may require approval on to help them understand. Working in a cooperative fashion is probably beneficial for everybody. So we'll, we'll take a look.
And I will just say, Mayor, like, like you uncovered earlier, I think the development's done now. Now home builders are building, so it's probably a new group ordering and they may just need a, another reminder, original reminder to, to orchestrate that differently. I hope.
And that's, that's what I was, that's what I was getting at. I was like, I don't want to cross into another, you know, we needed to vote on the, you know, the project at hand. And I didn't want to, you know, bring up something that wasn't on the agenda. But, you know, that's why we have the round table, so we can discuss stuff like this. So anyway, we'll, Mr. Hogan will look forward to hearing from, you know, what y'all come up with for that. And if we could do it before the next agenda, for the next meeting, then if it's something that we, we need to vote on, then we can do that. So, all right, let's keep Fairview beautiful. And, you know, pick up trash and don't throw it out. And thank you to the staff and everyone and Griggs and, and the board. Everybody works so hard and does such a good job. Good meeting.
Don't make any citizens arrest.
Well, you know, yeah. I, 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 well, anyway, I try to, I try to, I know, I try to stay safe when I, but you know, I'm, I'm very passionate about that. Y'all know, I say that every single meeting and just, to see that right in front of my face, I just really had a, had a hard time with that. So anyway, but, all right, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Thank you all for being here.